Good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council for Monday, February the 3rd, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And the invocation this evening will be given by the Reverend Steve Smolgin of the Hope Reform Church. And thank you for coming.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity. Would you pray with me? Almighty God, we greet you this evening. We acknowledge your existence and your rightful authority over the affairs of men. What is done in this place this evening is an echo of, a reflection of, your sovereign rule. Thank you for creating us in your image. Thank you for breathing the breath of your life into us. Thank you for entrusting to us the work of your hands. We live in a beautiful place. Many who visit here agree. We care about those who visit and those who live here. We care about those who have in some way invested themselves into our community and its shared life. Thank you for this place that is South Haven. We pray for our schools, for our businesses. We pray for organizations that seek to enhance the quality of our lives and that of our community. We pray for homes, rental properties, gathering points, places of worship. We pray tonight for open ears, clear heads, and receptive hearts. May those who share do so gently and always with respect. Guide your servants as they consider business that, in the end, touches us all. Thank you for their willingness and for their faithfulness. Guide these men and women in the decisions to be made, especially those to be made tonight. And in these days, calm the waters, Lord, calm the waters. Be God over the wind and the waves, the times and the seasons. Do so in nature and in our culture. We ask again that this community be yours so that those who live here, who work here, who travel and visit here will, in fact, experience your presence and your blessing. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you for coming. Next, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. It's nice we have a nice crowd. We have a couple of proclamations this evening for kind of an amazing lifesaving event here. So I think I've got George coming up first. He's going to read the first one, and I will read the second one. We have one officer not here tonight, but we'll get him next time.
Now, therefore be it resolved that the city of South Haven wishes to recognize citizen Austin James Gorbowski for his lifesaving efforts during a recent emergency call. Whereas on January 8th, 2019, citizen Austin James Gorbowski was inside his apartment at Park Meadows when he heard a loud crash. Immediately going outside to investigate the cause, he noticed people yelling and running down by a pond in the RV park south of the apartment complex. And whereas once citizen Austin James Gorbowski arrived at the pond, he saw a vehicle floating on top of the water with someone still inside. He told the occupant to roll down the window and sit on the edge of the door frame, which she did, but shortly thereafter, the vehicle began to sink. And whereas South Haven police officers were dispatched to a report of a person trapped in a sinking vehicle that had been driven into a pond. Upon arrival of Officer Lucas Keane and Officer Melendez at Park Meadow Apartment Complex, they were unable to locate the pond or vehicle. After surveilling the area, they noticed people waving and asking for help in the RV park directly behind the apartment complex. And whereas Officer Lucas King and Officer Melendez exited their patrol vehicle, jumped a fence, and ran toward the screaming bystanders, at which time they saw a vehicle rapidly sinking in a frigid, partially frozen pond. A person was still partially inside the vehicle and attempting to climb out of the open driver's side window. And whereas Officer Keane without hesitation doffed his external ballistic vest and entered the water where citizen Austin James Gorbowski joined him, helped to pull the driver out of the car, and with Officer Melendez's assistance swam her toward the shore. And whereas South Haven Area Emergency Services paramedics arrived and treated and transported the driver to Bronson-South Haven Emergency Room. And whereas the air temperature that evening was 21 degrees and the eight-foot-deep pond was ice-covered, except where the car broke through. The driver reported being unable to move because of the extreme cold. Because of the quick action of citizen Austin James Gorbowski, Officer Keane, and Officer Melendez, the driver survived what could have been a much worse outcome. Now, therefore be it resolved that the city of South Haven wishes to recognize citizen Austin James Gorbowski for his lifesaving actions. And this is signed by Mayor Scott Smith.
Again, thank you. We'll be down there for a picture in a second. I've got the second one, which will sound a little similar, but I'm going to read this because we've got Officer Keane here. Now, therefore let it be resolved that the city of South Haven wishes to recognize Officer Lucas Keane for his lifesaving efforts during a recent emergency call. Whereas on January the 8th, 2019, South Haven police officers were dispatched to report of a person trapped in a sinking vehicle that had been driven onto a pond. Upon the arrival of Officer Lucas Keane and Officer Melendez at Park Meadows Apartment Complex, they were unable to locate the pond or vehicle. After surveying the area, they noticed people waving and asking for help in the RV park directly to the south of the apartment complex. And whereas Officer Lucas Keane and Officer Melendez exited their patrol vehicle, jumped a fence, and ran toward the screaming bystanders, at which time they saw a vehicle rapidly sinking in a frigid, partially frozen pond. A person was still partially inside the vehicle and attempting to climb out of the open driver's side window. And whereas Officer Keane without hesitation doffed his external ballistic vest and entered the water where a good Samaritan joined him, helped pull the driver out of the car, and with the assistance of Officer Melendez swam her toward the shore. And whereas South Haven Area Emergency Services paramedics arrived and treated and transported the driver to Bronson-South Haven Emergency Room. And whereas the air temperature that evening was 21 degrees and the eight-foot-deep pond ice was covered, except where the car broke through, the driver reported being unable to move because of the extreme cold. Because of the quick action of citizen Austin James Gorbowski, Officer Keane and Officer Melendez, the driver survived what could have been a much worse outcome. Now, therefore let it be resolved that the city of South Haven wishes to recognize Officer Lucas Keane for his lifesaving actions. And again, thank you very much to everybody here. So, well done. Get these two guys right down. Make sure I got the right one here for you. And we do. Perfect.
Mr. Mayor and council, would I be able to add a little bit more information regarding this? So, for Mr. Gorbowski, just to back up, he was inside his apartment, very comfortable, doing his own thing and heard the crash. So, you know, some people call the police or 911, some people don't, some people might look out their window. Well, not only did he look out his window, got some clothes on, and he ran outside to render aid. It was his direction to the driver before the car completely became submerged in water to yell to her to try and open the window, but he was giving her directions immediately, which I think really resulted in the successful outcome. And then not only to go to the scene, but to jump into freezing cold water, literally swimming. You know, it's described as a pond, but it was a very deep pond because by the time they rescued the driver, it was completely submerged underwater. So, just wanted to add that additional information. You know, we get paid, it's our job, but to have a citizen take the extraordinary actions that he did is truly exceptional. So, and this is his wife, Michelle, next to him. So, again, it's awesome.
That's awesome, yeah. Thank you for getting involved and obviously helping save a life. All right. Let's, quick photo op over here. Let's do it.
Right in front of the council. Yep.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Chris Campbell.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here. Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's approved. Consent agenda, items A through H.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda, items A through H.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Travis.
Arnold.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Now, to new business, the city council will be asked to consider the following special event applications. The first one, Special Event 2020-01, the Alvan's Firecracker Furry 5K to be held on July the 5th, 2020, from 7:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. at the Kids Corner Park and along the route which is included in our packet.
I make a motion to approve Special Event 2020-01, Alvan's Firecracker Furry 5K.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and we have somebody that's going to share with us what we're doing. Welcome.
Hi, Grace Gilmore from Alvan Humane Society. Alvan is requesting a special event permit for July 5th, 2020, for the Firecracker Furry 5K Run/Walk A Family Event.
Very good.
Members of council, staff has had a chance to review the application, no concerns. Council, this is ready for your consideration, and staff would recommend approval.
Very good.
Is there anything new with the event you'd like to promote with this lovely audience?
It's run on the Van Buren Trail, so that hasn't changed, and all proceeds go to support the care and adoption of animals at Alvan, so not really any big change there.
But a great event.
Thank you.
Great cause. So, thank you for promoting it.
Grace, this is like the, is it like the?
Sixth annual.
The sixth year, okay.
Yes.
I knew you've been doing this for a while, so.
Yep.
Very good.
Where should the public sign up?
After tonight, it'll be online on a link, which will be available on our website and our Facebook page for Alvan.
Very good. Thank you, and we appreciate the early application. So, very good. Any other questions? All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the Firecracker Furry 5K. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. Thanks again for coming out.
Thank you.
Next, we have Special Event 2020-02, the South Haven Art Fair 2020 to be held July the 3rd, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. until July the 5th, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. at Stanley Johnson Park.
I make a motion to approve Special Event 2020-02, South Haven Art Fair 2020.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, and?
I'm Carrie Higgy, the Director of the South Haven Center for the Arts. This is our 62nd annual art fair, and not only is it completely aligned with our mission, but it supports the rest of our work during our year and makes our organization sustainable. So, thank you so much for your consideration.
It's always well done. So, thanks for the information. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this has been actively reviewed by the city staff. The application is ready for approval.
Sounds good.
On a side note, it's my mom's favorite event every year.
There we go. All right, good. And we appreciate you guys support the Boy Scouts, too. We sell a lot of water there, so we appreciate that. It's a good fundraiser for the Boy Scouts. Any public questions about the Art Fair 2020? Seeing none, no more council comments? If not, we've got a motion and a second to approve Special Event 2020-02, the South Haven Art Fair 2020.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, and?
I'm Carrie Higgy, the Director of the South Haven Center for the Arts. This is our 62nd annual art fair, and not only is it completely aligned with our mission, but it supports the rest of our work during our year and makes our organization sustainable. So, thank you so much for your consideration.
It's always well done. So, thanks for the information. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this has been actively reviewed by the city staff. The application is ready for approval.
Sounds good.
On a side note, it's my mom's favorite event every year.
There we go. All right, good. And we appreciate you guys support the Boy Scouts, too. We sell a lot of water there, so we appreciate that. It's a good fundraiser for the Boy Scouts. Any public questions about the Art Fair 2020? Seeing none, no more council comments? If not, we've got a motion and a second to approve Special Event 2020-02, the South Haven Art Fair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. Thanks again. So now, I think we're at the spot where most folks are here. We're going to be receiving a presentation from city staff as well as outside professionals on the impact of the high water from Lake Michigan and the Black River on the city's public spaces, parks, infrastructure, and marinas, and to discuss potential funding sources. So again, I just want to thank, ahead of time, we have a lot of very smart people here in this room that are going to give us information. We have a lot of water, we have a multimillion-dollar dilemma as far as getting some of these things taken care of, so this is a discussion. We by no means are solving anything tonight, we're just starting the discussion. So please, come with open ears, come with, you know, questions. We're going to encourage that. We've got multiple times to do that. Council will be asked to, you know, throw in your questions as well. So, on that note, I'll turn it over and say thank you for coming and listening and...
Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight's going to be a little different than a normal council meeting. The intent is to spend quite a bit of time working through the issue of high water and its impact on the city's critical infrastructure, parks, public spaces, et cetera. For this presentation, we have a team that's been working on this. Bill Hunter will be leading the first part of the presentation. Myself and Travis are actually going to move back to this next table so that the rest of the engineering staff can move forward and begin the presentation. As the mayor noted, there are multiple breaks in the presentation to allow for questions, and my goal tonight is to try and, to the best of our ability, to educate the council as well as the general public. Mr. Mayor, if you give us just two minutes, we will move and allow everyone to take their seats.
Very good. Take your time.
Tonight, we're going to do a team approach. The team's going to consist of city staff, myself, Mike Dop. We also have Abin Marsh here and Fleeson Vanderbrink. Abin Marsh will consist of Mike Morphy, and Chris Cook is here as well, plus for Fleeson Vanderbrink, Mike Vanderpluug. So, we're going to start the presentation off with Mike Morphy. He's going to start, and then we're going to, there's going to be times where we're going to hand it over, so you might hear me talking, and then Mike Dop. So, feel free, there's going to be points, as the city manager said, about questions. So, take it away, Mike.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having us. So, as Bill mentioned, Mike Morphy with Abin Marsh. Looking forward to going through some information here, and feel free to stop me at any time. I'm going to cover some of the water, some of the water level information to give some background to everything, and then talk about the marinas and some of the coastal issues. So, just to review the purpose again, the purpose of this study was really to review what are the infrastructure needs that are going to result from high water. As everybody knows, we're in a high-water condition. We've been here before, but we wanted to try to get our arms around all the potential needs that are going to result from this. Also, I wanted to provide some planning level costs. You're going to see some big numbers in this presentation. They're based upon costs incurred, they're based upon some detailed cost estimates, and others are high-level concept cost estimates. And then also to help the city in its pursuit for funding, to help make sure some of these things can happen at the rate that they're going to need to happen. So, real quick, Great Lakes water levels, we talk about it in three different ways. First is long-term, and that's what happens in years, decades, and centuries. We have really good data, that's about 100 years of data. Obviously, the Great Lakes have been around for a lot longer than that. All of the Great Lakes at this time are at or above record levels or approaching them. Then we talk about annual levels. So every year, we see rises and falls in Lake Michigan. Typically, that is about one to two feet on an annual basis. I'll show that in just a minute here. And then short-term water level changes, which are things that can happen in hours or a day or half a day. Often, those are wind-driven, weather-driven, or pressure-driven. And when you're on the lower end of a river, that can be caused by rainfall events in the short term as well. One of the levels that we're going to talk about is low water datum. That's just a reference plane that we use. It is simply a static elevation that helps us give some reference to where water levels So, long-term water level fluctuations, what you're looking at here is 100 years of the data that we have, dating back to 1918. Starting at the top left is 1918, and then the chart breaks in half and then gets down to, close to 2020 at the bottom right. Couple of things to point out here that we've highlighted. The red line in the middle of the chart represents a long-term average, which really doesn't mean much for planning, it just gives us a reference line that we can use to compare today's water levels. Then we've highlighted some periods of time over the last 100 years where we have water levels that were below that long-term average for a long period of time. What's interesting, there's three of those periods, the '30s, the '50s, and '60s, and then very recently from 1999 to 2014. So, we had a 15-year period where we were below that long-term average, and we got really used to it. We had a lot of wide beaches, a lot of accretion that generally occurred. But since 2013, in January, when we set the all-time monthly mean record low level, the Lake Michigan, Lakes Michigan hereon have risen about five and a half feet. So that's what you're all seeing, and that's the change that happened very recently and what we're all here to talk about today. And then in recent years, this is a short-level chart that the Army Corps puts out every month, I'm sure you've seen it before. But with regard to what's expected in 2020 and some of the projections that you're probably reading in the news, you can see the long-term average levels in blue there on the screen. So you can see that one-to-two-foot annual rise and fall that occurs. And you'll note on the red line at the top of the screen, which was 2019, that through July, July to December, we've only dropped about three or four inches. Typically, in that period, the blue line indicates, that's about a one-foot drop that we see. So not only were we high last year, but we really haven't seen that drop over the winter, meaning that when typically we get a rise in the spring, we have a higher launch point. So, we should expect for and plan for elevated conditions well into 2020, if not longer. And as short-term water level, here's one quick example of that. This is a quick rise that we observed in November. We had a strong sustained northwest wind, and you can see the wind vector at the bottom right of the screen there, which resulted in a change of about a foot and three inches in a very short period of time. Bottom left is the chart from Holland, Michigan, that shows that water level climb from the 27th to close to midnight on the 27th. So these things happen. This is why you see water levels go up and down in very short periods of time on the Black River. As I mentioned before, it's also affected by rainfall as well. So with that, I wanted to open up if there's any questions about those slides, the really exciting ones.
Any questions up here, council? I see no hands going up out there, so keep going.
All right. Okay, so we do have several categories that we estimated these costs within. They're not in any particular order, so don't think that this is in order of priority, but we kind of tried to compartmentalize these different costs so that they can be looked at and evaluated. So coastal erosion, obviously, the city has several roadways that end at Lake Michigan, several roadways that parallel Lake Michigan, they're listed there, a bunch of them. As erosion continues to occur, some of those high bluffs, particularly the sandy ones, we can see damage to the end of the roadways and potentially infrastructure. So in order to fix that, there's a number of different things that are used for coastal erosion, coastal protection measures, and we think that it's realistic to expect that between a half a million and two million are going to need to be spent on that as we get through this high-water level condition. The screen shows a couple of those locations. You can see South Beach in the top images. We've got waves overtopping the jetties there, coming across and causing some erosion. The bottom-left image is from a recent drone video that was collected, I think, through the city. That is the end of Beaver Court, and you can see that that shoreline was armored at one time with broken riprap, typically broken concrete, but it has been under attack, and we've been watching some nearby projects, and it may not be long before you see some major issues there. And then the image on the bottom right is, of course, South Beach. This is where we see water overtopping the jetties and also carrying away some of the fine-grained sediment and sands that are at South Beach. Couple more images. Top left is Pilgrim Haven, which of course is a city park. A lot of visitors there, but a lot of erosion is going on there with the sandy beach. And a couple of the road and parks that are throughout the city, and you can see the proximity of those waves to where those access points end. Bottom left is actually, I think, the Newcombe Beach Outfall, and you can see that the erosive line is actually landward of the end of those stairs at this point. This image is just to show a few projects that are going on in the area. There's images from New Buffalo, Holland, and St. Joseph in here, and these are some of the measures that are taken to prevent coastal erosion, or minimize it, I should say. So, large armor stone, typically quarried stone, much of which is sourced from Wisconsin. Sheet piling is used to retain the bluff, so in combination, those two things provide the best of both worlds. With that, any questions about that part of it? Hearing none?
I guess I have one question. So I've heard that some of the coastal erosion measures that some people put in place can have a negative impact on adjacent areas if not done properly. Is that correct?
Yes, it is correct. So, really, any coastal protection measure is going to have to be some type of a hardened approach when it reaches a certain point, I should say. And the best you can do is to create a sloped revetment that helps to absorb the wave energy rather than reflect it. But even so, a sloped armor stone is going to be different than the sandy beach that was likely there at one point. We try to avoid these types of things when we can plan for where homes are built, or buildings are constructed, or roadways are built. But the fact remains that, you know, so much of our waterfronts are already completely constructed, and we're often left with no choice but to defend them when it comes time. So it's a matter of minimizing that impact wherever it's possible. Thank you.
Well, I think part of your question, too, the discussion we had with the University of Michigan here last year, there is no standard method. There's no standard, you know, there's not a state standard, not up and down the coast, there's a lot of different, there's a mix of fixes, so to speak. Have you, any thoughts on that? Because to his point, somebody may want to revet their property, protect their property, their neighbor decides not to.
Mm-hmm.
That's, right now, you could, if that makes any sense, that's probably what you're getting at, because person A versus person B, I mean, does that make sense?
Sure. There certainly are industry standards, and there are guidelines that we follow from the Coastal Engineering Manual and the Shore Protection Manual. What those tell us is that construction of a vertical wall without the revetment in front of it can be the worst-case scenario, so that can accelerate erosion. As to whether, you know, the choice between protecting or not protecting, not everybody has that option. And so, you know, what one homeowner do may be very, what one homeowner does might be very different than their next-door neighbor, of course.
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on your point, in February 2019, actually, it was Valentine's Day, the University of Michigan teamed with LIAA and a... Day, University of Michigan teamed with LIAA, an engineering and consulting firm based in Traverse City, they came down and did a presentation. It was University of Michigan, Northern Michigan, and, I'm sorry, Michigan Tech University and LIAA. They talked about coastal erosion, and then planning for resiliency. One of the outcomes that came from that session is we have finalized an agreement with South Haven Charter Township, Casco Township, to pull our three local planning commissions together. LIAA will be leading those discussions over 2020, trying to develop better planning approaches for the overall community, so that as you look to the north side, trying to preserve some of the areas that currently don't have any type of shoreline protection, and then as we look to the south side, trying to develop a unified standard for some of these shoreline protection systems.
Perfect. That's a really great approach. The city of St. Joseph recently did that in 2012, similar type of effort. So, in an area where you don't have homes close to the water, and you can plan ahead and try to restrict people causing their own problems, really, that makes a lot of sense. And time's running out in a lot of places to be able to do that, so it's great that you're doing that.
Thank you. I ask you a question. What's causing this? You know, I've heard so many reasons, I don't know fact from fiction. Is it global warming? Is it the last couple of years when it's really been cold? I've been told when the lake freezes over, you don't get evaporation, that brings the water level up. I've been told recently that Canada is dumping more water into the Great Lakes, so they can raise the water, so their ships will rise up and they can transport more cargo. So, before we react to what we can do, can we figure out what's causing it? And then, lastly, is this part of the 10-year cycle? Because we're not at the highest high point, and I've seen pictures from residents that have shown it's even been higher than now. So, can you give us fact from fiction on a couple of those things?
Sure. So, the water levels in the Great Lakes are caused by a lot of different factors. You've hit on a few of them. There's discussions about the man-made controls, and how much can we affect by how far we open locks and such. That's a matter of inches, is what I understand. So, changing some of the human controls, we can have somewhat of an impact, but not a major impact on these levels. As far as where the water levels are today, in the range of history, there's some reports beyond 100 years ago, that show that water levels were up to a foot higher than what we consider our record. So, our 100 years is really a small piece of the history of the Great Lakes, and even in that 100 years, we've been close to a foot higher than we are right now. And that was in 1986. So, we're still within the envelope that we typically call historic, for design purposes. The evaporation rate certainly has something to do with it, how much ice we have in the winter, when that ice leaves us, and when the evaporation cycle begins, those are all parts of the equation. So, it's hard for me to say which one's causing it, but those are all parts of it, and things that people like, the folks at NOAA study pretty frequently. So, as far as the erosion, I would say that certainly when you have higher water levels, it allows larger waves to get closer to shore. It's really that simple. When those larger waves reach shore, they cause, typically cause erosion, pulling away sand and fine-grained materials. Those materials eventually make it out to deep water, beyond what we call the depth of closure, about 25, 30 feet, at which time, we may never see them again. So, they make it into deep water, and then we really never have them brought back up to shallow water. That's a process that's ongoing. Of course, these lakes are relatively young on a geological scale, so we should expect that process to continue. So, that sediment supply both crossshore, which is what I was just talking about with erosion, and longshore effects as well. So, on Southern Lake Michigan, we have longshore drift that brings sand from north to south, and then whenever we have structures that are shoreparallel, it can impact that flow of sand. So, it's another component of the local conditions here. But all these things are, they all react to each other, they all affect each other, and ultimately affect how much erosion that we have, in a nutshell.
Good summary.
Okay.
Go on.
Anything else on that slide? Okay, riverbank erosion. So, as we go up the Black River, obviously, we have high levels from rains, the wind, waves coming up the channel, and just high water levels. That's resulted in erosion in a number of places, sidewalks and promenades, sea walls that may not be sealed completely, that causes the loss of soils from behind the wall. So, we've seen examples of that just downstream of the south-side marina. There's an example on the bottom-left, and then the bottom-right and top-right are the fix of that, going back and repairing those sidewalks and filling those voids. So, this is one void that opened up in 2019, but there may be others that we don't see yet, because the sidewalk hasn't failed. So, we think the estimate to repair riverbank erosion on an ongoing basis, knowing what we know today, is between a half a million and $2 million. Here's some other examples of that, at the various marinas in town. You've got retaining walls where water's gotten inland, it's washed out fine sediments, and then you've seen small sinkholes open up. So, we've got, the top-left is the north-side marina. The center-top is actually at the Maritime Museum Marina. You've got some temporary measures that were placed there to try to stabilize that shoreline. And the bottom-left is actually the revetment that was built along the promenade near the south-side marina. And as you can see, when still-water level is up to the point where only about a foot of that rock is exposed, it doesn't leave a whole lot of rock to absorb the wave energy that comes up your channel. So, it really takes that out of the equation. And then, center-bottom is actually Allen Avery Park, where we've got a really bad wave climate. We'll talk about that a little bit more later as well. Here's some more examples from the north side. You've got sidewalks settling because of loss of fill from underneath it. You've got a retaining wall settling, again, because of the loss of fill. And as those water levels come up and down with those short-term, one-foot events that we talked about, they're actually pumping materials out from underneath those walls, which then, there's nothing underneath those walls, and they're left to settle on their Here are some of the fixes at the north-side marina, some of the repairs that have been done. I think only about a third or a quarter of that wall has been repaired to date. Hopefully, the whole thing doesn't need to be repaired, but I know there's plans to do more of it moving forward. And then, the last item, I think, that I'm going to speak about here is the harbor wave mitigation. We completed a study in 2018, I think we presented to members of this council back in 2018, looking at how do we deal with the waves that make it up the Black River Channel. When we get those large wind events, waves propagate up the channel, the two sheet-pile walls are impervious, and they reflect that energy, and those waves make it up into the channel and cause damage. So, we looked at several different options, modeled out what they would do to everybody else in the harbor, and the recommended solution is implementing these wave absorbers, which should be constructed into the federal jetties, just inside Lake Michigan, and that would help to absorb that wave energy and reduce how those waves can impact both infrastructure in the inner harbor, as well as boats and other activities. And the estimate through that study was $4.8 million to construct those. And then, I think with that, Bill, you want to talk about beach nourishment?
Yes, thanks, Mike. Beach nourishment, we've all been down at South Beach, North Beach during, I know myself, every time the winds go up, we go down there and take a look and see what's going on. Some of the pictures you see right here, just taken to, make sure you remember this location of this, the trashcan here and the parking meter here, because we're going to point that out, actually, in another slide. Beach nourishment, initially, it's great, it gives you a short-term benefit, but we did a little experiment with staff in this same area. We put a pretty significant little pile there, and we watched over the time, and it just, it takes but days for it to go. So, you've got to remember, anytime we're doing nourishment, it is a good thing, it does, but it's, it is a short-term. So, whatever we're doing there, it's going to eventually, eventually leave. Next, the photo over to your right is actually a Monroe Bluff. Next slide. Next slide that you see, you're seeing actually the Monroe Bluff right now. You take a look, and there's the storm outfall that's exposed. And with all this waves that we have been, we actually discovered, we have our own little wall here, actually, south of the blue stairs. I've been told by several people about it, and this is the first, actually, I've seen it, and I've walked down there myself, the pictures are some I've taken. The slide over to the bottom-left is, you can see, actually, the soils are a little different. That's due to a project that, over the years, I want to say, maybe it was in 2012, we did some filling in there, so that's why the soils look different. Also, the bottom-right, that's the blue stairs. That's a picture, actually, I got from YouTube and took a snapshot. That actually, what you're looking at, if you look to the top of that vegetation where it stops, that's another landing, that's still buried. You can actually, when you go down to the bottom of the blue stairs right now, you can see the top of those rails starting to expose. So, there's still actually more of the blue stairs, and I think Mike actually told me as a kid, he remembered stepping out into the water, so. And this is a picture that was taken when we were doing beach nourishment. So, from that side, it was actually, I think it was maybe Bill Stefan or something, and he was panning, and he took this photo. So, next slide. This is actually just showing staff what we do every year, and this is what, typical what we do every year. Every spring, this is what staff does, and we're out there constantly, even more so with these high waters. We're out there a couple of days, every morning we're out there, so, and with the high waters, a couple of times a week, actually, with loaders and dozers actually leveling it off. Next slide. Monroe Bluff. This is, back in 2017, we hired Edgewater to help the city come up with a plan for Monroe Bluff. Through many public meetings, public open houses, public meetings with the planning commission and the parks commission, we approved the Monroe Bluff Beach Management Plan. Where city staff is planning on submitting this as a Michigan National Trust Fund grant for our next round of grants, to do the work on the top of the hill. You're wondering about, maybe you're thinking, what's the importance of it? The importance is, when to manage the hill, or to manage erosion, is to start on the top. Some of the things that will be implemented is little walls to allow people actually better access, so you don't have people maybe trying to get a better view, to go further down, it'll give them other accesses. Plus, controlling the points at the blue stairs and the brown stairs, so when people go down there, there'll be posts set up and then ropes. It forces them to the water, so they don't, so those other goat trails that you're seeing will start be, will start filled with vegetation and shore it up. And that was approved, like I said, by many open houses and plans, and hopefully, we'll have a strong application this coming grant cycle. Next slide. North Beach, you can see, actually, that picture to the top, that's one of the high winds coming, you can see, there are times, actually, you just couldn't see anything over there, just water. The photos to the bottom-left, that's 2012, I mean, look at the sand. You'll see that, actually, if you look at, and Mike correct me if I'm wrong, most of these jetties, when you see them, you'll always see, majority of the sand is to the north.
Yeah, and this on the Lake Michigan, that is true.
Yeah. You'll see that, every jetty, you'll see a majority of sand to the north, and to the south of the jetty, there'll be less. So, you can see the amount of sand we had in '12, and then, look at '19. Next slide. Questions? City Council may have?
I don't know. Any public questions on that? Keep going.
Pass the next one off to Mike again.
Thank you. So, just a quick listing of the city's marinas, we've got the south-side marina, they're shown in the bottom-right there. South Side Marina, North Side Marina, Maritime Marina, and Black River Park Marina, which is upstream from the photo in the slide. Each of these marinas faces its own challenges. Of course, the South Side Marina, North Side Marina are probably most impacted by the wave energy coming up the channel, we discussed. But all of these marinas are currently fixed dock marinas, timber piles, steel piles at north side, which presents, of course, challenges for high water. If you build the slips too high, when we're in low-water conditions, it's a real issue, because boaters need to climb up and down from their boats, and it's always going to be a challenge. But the level at which they're built now, they're probably dry today, but during a wind event from the north, when we see that short-level rise of a foot, foot-and-a-half, we've seen several of the piers underwater in 2019. And again, we're still well below the 1986 record-high, so the city's taken some proactive measures to try to plan for that, I think you're going to hear about later. But in terms of making improvements to these marinas, we've estimated some budgetary numbers to do things like raising the piers on a permanent level, not temporary, to implement new electrical and water systems. And they added up to some pretty large numbers pretty quickly. Marina work is expensive. Of course, electrical work is really expensive to meet the codes today and to protect boaters. So, we see about half a million to a million at each of the marinas, and then the Maritime Marina, which is actually in need of a lot more work, is closer to $1 to $3 million. And again, that's primarily docks, replacement of docks, ice damage repairs, and utility Here's a few images of some of the high-water events. Bottom-right is Black River Park Marina, you can see the picnic area is out in the water during that event. The large photo is from the north-side marina looking across to south-side marina. You can see that the dock surface is actually underwater, very close to being underwater. Top-right is the south-side marina during one of those short-term, high-water events. Here's a few other images of those events. Flooding combined with the wind creates this scenario. Bottom-right is south-side marina, where you can just barely see the deck. And then, actually, the image on the left, if you look across the river, that's the north-side marina over there. Couple more images that illustrate some of the issues. So, on the left side are some of the electrical boxes around the north-side marina. So, they're in between the city's property and the adjacent marina property, but we've seen erosion that is occurring behind that wall, causing all that area to drop down, and those junction boxes are part of that area that's moving. The center-top is the south-side marina during an event when it was actually underwater, a few inches underwater. Bottom-center image is looking underneath docks at the north-side marina, where you can see the water line is underwater in that image, so you can imagine what happens when ice is on that building and moving in the wintertime. And then, you can see some of the conduit for the electrical underneath there as well. So, it's key that those are, those are fully sealed, but we know they've been there a while, so that's something that the city's really looking at very closely. And then, you can see moving ice, top-right, that's what happens when it breaks up and isn't solid ice across the Black River. And then, the bottom-right is over near north-side marina and the Coast Guard Building, where we've got some wall issues and loss of fine materials and some aging boardwalks. Any questions on that front?
Any questions in the audience? I got a question in the back. If you'd like to come on up, just state your name.
I'll never mind.
Okay.
I think we're going to do stormwater now, and turn that over to Mr. Dop.
We've got a couple of stormwater outlets that we're starting to have issues with. One is at the end of Delaware Court. About a month ago, one of the last storm events we had, this outlet washed away. It had been one that we had been keeping an eye on for the last year. It was a corrugated metal pipe out on a metal structure. We're currently in the process of replacing this with a directional drill system. So, we would drill it from the top and then pull the pipe back up through, and we wouldn't utilize this old system anymore. This is just partially older pipe, and then, on top of it with the higher water, it's just been pounding it over the course of time. And then, another one is at the South Beach Storm Outlet. You'll see that again in another slide, that Bill's going to talk about it, with the water treatment plant. But the outlet system, over time now... But the outlet system, over time now, has collapsed, the outlet pipe going out to the river. And that's partially, when you see the pond, the water ponding up in the parking lot at the South Beach, it's due to that pipe doesn't function correctly anymore. So we're going to have to do some de-watering and expose that and replace that pipe going out. That's something we were planning on doing this past fall, but it, due to the weather changed on us, and we couldn't get a good open time, so we're planning on doing that in the spring. And, the next one, Bill?
Next one will be, we're going to discuss utility infrastructure. We're going to go over the water plant, some of the pump stations and lift stations. Next slide. This one here just shows actually, I'm sorry, this shows an overview of the wastewater plant. I think some of you actually have taken tours of this before, and I'd be happy to give tours to you, so anytime you'd like one, please let me know. Next slide. This one actually is, I'm going to hand this over to Mike Vanderplu with Fleece and Vanderbrink, and he's going to take this from here.
Yeah, so I'm going to talk about some of the impacts to the wastewater plant, and mainly the ones that are caused by the high lake levels and the flooding around the site. So current average, or annual average flow is about 1.4 million gallons per day. And that was actually 2018's average. Looking at the impacts from the flow this year, looking at a period from October to January compared to 2018 to 2019, 2020, flows have increased 300,000 gallons per day. And so that's a pretty big impact to, you know, all that additional water coming to the plant. So that equals around, you know, additional 40 million gallons over that four months that's coming to the plant. So that puts additional stress on the entire collection system, as well as the treatment plant itself. Design capacity of the plant is 2.2 MGD. You know, the flows in January, average, it was a wet January, and with the high lake levels, that average flow was 2 MGD. So there's a lot more water coming to the wastewater plant, and that water's getting in with the high groundwater. It's flowing into the sewers, and that's how it's coming to the plant. See, if you want to go to the next slide. So another impact to the plant, not only we're getting more flow, but we're also getting less, we have less ability to get the flow out of the plant. So if you look at the bottom left, there's a building there called Headworks, it's a little hard to read on that screen up there, but that's where flow enters the plant. It comes in underground in the sewer and gets pumped up to these tanks on the site that are above ground, and it flows by gravity. It kind of steps down through each of the tanks, and then before getting discharged to the Black River. So because everything is flowed by gravity, the level of the lake can impact how much flow you can pass through the plant. So as that water level rises, it's kind of like kinking your hose, and really restricting the flow that you can get through the plant. So not only we have increasing flows coming to the plant, but now we're kind of restricting what we can get out of the plant. The other issue around the site is flooding. There's the stream, I'll go back to that map, yeah. There's the stream on the right-hand side, right next to Shell Park. And basically, water can, when the wa, when the water backs up in the river, it can overflow coming from that stream and get onto the plant site. And so that, there's some other pictures here in the next couple of slides here that kind of show that, but. So what we're looking at doing to kind of combat that is to build berms, raise the driveways, you know, the entrances to the site, so we can still get access to the site, but now we've got it protected at flood level. As well as build a pump station to help pump water out of the plant, to increase our flow-through capacity. Plant has some, you know, means to kind of send flow a little to a detention area on-site, so we can kind of handle some of those additional flows, but that can only handle so much before, you know, before there's the potential to overflow from the clarifiers. And that would mean basically, you know, partially treated wastewater overflowing onto the ground and then going into the river without being disinfected, which we want to avoid at all costs. So we put the pump station in to make sure we can keep flow moving through the plant, and build berms around it to keep the floodwater out of the site.
Next slide. Next slide just shows a little bit what Mike was discussing, that top left corner, that actually is, shows the drying beds. And you can see the water surrounding the plant right there. Actually, Dave sent me a video, Dave Mulak, of fish actually swimming around his office, so. I kid you not, to the top right, that's actually Shell Park, that's the new bridge that was put in. And I, that's, I got the water, didn't get the water where it was actually, it was actually hitting the bottom of that bridge. To the bottom left, that's the entrance, and all these are surrounding, surrounding the wastewater plant. So the bottom left is the entrance to the Black River Park. You can actually see a current going through there. And again, to your bottom, that's, that's the office. You see that plow right there, that's the office entrance to the wastewater plant. And as Mike said, this, our whole plant is based on, it's based on, it does pump up in the Headworks. Everything else is gravity, so if you have, like Mike said, pinching off a hose, you have water up against the discharge, it slows it down, slows your capacity. He does mention the detention basin, that basin was put in so we wouldn't have any more sanitary sewer overflows. Now if we have to use that in a dry weather period, and if we get a rain, we're going to have sanitary sewer overflows. It's just going to happen, which is, again, magnifies as a magnitude later on, so, next slide. This actually shows the backhoe, that is a lift station that we put in, where we had to have staff actually berm around the lift station, just to prevent water from not only getting into the lift station, but also getting into the generator. There was some damage, but minimum, but that's one of the things, we have to lift the generator up, just so it's outside of water. To your top right, that's the, that's the maintenance garage. That's, that's what you see, I mean, it's, like I said, it's right. Historically, everybody's going through this, every city designed their cities this way. You have a water plant on one side, wastewater plant on the other, that's how we did it. So this, this isn't new, where other cities are getting affected by this. So, next slide. I'm going to now take the time to go over the water treatment plant. A water treatment plant was put in place, it's fairly new, so June of 2011. It has a design capacity of 7 million gallons. Firm capacity is based on actually our intake, our intake has a, it's only one size, it's a 30-inch, so we're designed to that. In the future, if we run another intake out, we can get up to that capacity, so we have room that we can, for capacity sakes. Our plant is a conventional plant, we take the water actually from the lake, it goes through a rapid mix settling basins and through filtration. We add aluminum sulfate for a coagulant and a polymer for a future, for an aid, enhanced coagulation. And then we add chlorine actually at various parts of the plant, and then plus on discharge. We average probably about 1.7. We can have higher ones, we're up to the twos, the threes in the summertime, we probably peak in the July period, but that's what we probably average. Next slide. Now, this says actually just shows you an aerial of the plant. The building over to your, to your east, where Chris sets up actually is, there's a building up, right up to the north there, that's actually the high service. Underneath there is a million gallons of clean water, that's your fresh, fresh water. We have another quarter million that's underneath the water filtration plant, and those are connected, and you'll see that in another slide. As you see, it's, that is the closest part, our fresh water, to raw water. So, next slide, please. This actually, this slide here, you've got a lot, a lot going on, so bear with me, I'll go over the whole thing. What we have here is, you'll see a dashed line towards the bottom, call it a checkered line. That's what we're calling a tiger dam. It's something what we did a little research on, it's actually a tube, and we're, staff is looking at putting that measure out, and putting it out like, say, at the end of September, as a temporary measure to help prevent any more waves coming in and doing any more undermining, plus actually protect the clean, the intake, I'm sorry, not the intake, but the freshwater storage. We have a couple of spots to anchor, to dump sand. We're looking at that to be about 48,000, 49,000. If you take a look at actually the storm system, that's the green line up there, and Mike mentioned, and we highlight actually over there to replace the stormfall, and that shows where it discharges. Plus, we're hoping to, another thing we're looking at is building up the riprap, that's that dash, the checkered, towards the jetty. You can see that as well. I think as utilities go, to me, the top priorities are the utilities. If I have to prioritize this, of course, prioritization is city council, but staff, we feel actually our number-one priority probably, if we had to rank these, would be the wastewater plant, and a future one that Mike will go over, the Baskill Bridge, and then the water plant. And we just base that on the water levels and how that would affect right now, and we'll go more over those later. Next slide. You can see actually, there's the water. I took these pictures myself, you can see the outlooks right there, and there's the water, it's, that really wasn't that, it was windy, you can see the waves up there, but that's where it was cresting, and then going over the sidewalk, the, I'm sorry, the picture to your right, you can see the debris. We've had debris actually in the roadway, so the waves are washing everything in and undermining everything. Next slide. That just goes to show, that's showing us a winter picture of the high-service pumps in our storage area. You can see from the one slide, the building is the access to the pumps, but then we have an access point for the well itself. So, that just gives you a perspective. Next slide. Any counts, any questions actually on the wastewater plant, the water plant? Tiger dams?
Yeah, my question's about the tiger dam, so that, if you want to go back to that slide, so you were suggesting that was all off-season precautions?
What, my, yes, I was thinking-
Like a winter precaution?
Yes, I was thinking winter precautions, because that's where we're getting most of our wave action in. We were also thinking it's something temporary that we can remove. So the idea of those, they're giant tubes, you can buy them, and I think they come in 18s, 24s, 36s, and 48s, 42s. So, and you can buy these, and you can stack them up, and you fill them full of water. I talked to, I had some email exchanges with a rep, and they said they're rated up to negative 40 degrees. So I thought this would be something temporary you could put in during those winter months, and then take it back out and still have it open to the public, still depending on the water level, but that was the plan.
Members of council, just to follow up on Bill's statement, the use of the tiger dam is something that you would see typically along like the Mississippi River. It's to help control the water levels of just pressing in against public infrastructure. And the best way I can describe it is just the water bags that would typically be used around like a residential swimming pool. At the end of the season, you close the other pool and just support the other cover with water bags. Very similar, but just many times larger. And the upside of this is that, through the use of this type of structure, we can put them in, ride out the rough weather, and then as we get into the spring, summer, they can be removed to allow the public the enjoyment of the remaining beach.
Do we know if they've ever tested one of them on Lake Michigan?
No.
Maybe we can get sponsorship then.
Well, some of the areas that I've seen them tested, and they, pretty rugged, areas actually like Brian said, where they're constantly flooding all the time, they're, they sell actually, you can buy this trailer unit, this is where they, they sell to people that constantly flood. So they train you on it to set that up, so you can enable this, the flooding comes, your building is secure, the flooding goes down, you roll it back up, and you put it back, and you, it's, it's an ongoing thing. It's pretty durable, like, I was surprised, I had my reservations, because I thought, as you did, I was, the temperature is key, and she came back with negative 40 degrees, I says, I think that might work. They can also actually use, you can use a slurry mix tube, it's called a semi-permanent, where you pump slurry mix, but it's semi-permanent, meaning I'd have to have a jackhammer actually to break it up to get rid of it, so.
Could tiger dams be used for around the water treatment plant, or like Dunkley Street, things like that?
Yes, and actually, we do have another slide about Allen Avery Park, that, and that is something too, that could be looked at at Dunkley Street as well. We, we had some, Dunkley has a lot of openings in it, meaning there's the, there's the creek, it has a lot going on there, it's almost impossible, really. Me and Mike struggled, we were actually looking at that, and we start laying it out, and we'll, well, what about this, and what about this catch basin, and and it's, there's so much going on there. I think the original plan we have with Edgewater is the best plan still to date actually, for that one, but me and Mike did try to use this.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just one last point, and the purple squares, just want to bring to the council's attention that there's a day is coming where we'll have to look to relocate some of the playground equipment at the South Beach, find a temporary home either on the North Beach or other playgrounds, just to ensure that it survives, and that as the water begins to recede, we can seek to place it back at the South Beach.
That makes sense. Last question, we've done a fair amount of work on infiltration into the wastewater. With the large quantities we just discussed going in, have we identified like some of the spots where it's making it in and figured out how to bolster those spots?
We actually, there is one spot that Mike and I were just discussing, I think last weekend, it was by Allen Avery, where we suspect actually there's, we have some major infiltration there, because we have a lift station that's nearby that keeps alarming, so we're going to have that televised, and that might be something where we're looking at, we're talking about lining that, that's a possibility, but we have to get actually more video footage actually to find out. But yes, you're absolutely right, with the higher water, we have some utilities that are closer to your rivers or crossings, they're susceptible to this.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
I did see a hand, I don't know.
Oh, that's true, there was a hand a second ago. Just, if you- Okay, perfect, thank you.
Bill, one question, on this picture we're looking at right now, the blue lines and the green lines. The green line, I think you already talked about that, that's stormwater, right?
Yes, and the blue lines are the water mains, that's actually the water mains to the plant itself. It shows your, your high-service pump, your pump house there, your discharges from there, and how it's all interconnected. The one blue line that goes in the middle of the parking lot, and it kind of looks like it ends, that one actually is an equalization pipe that connects the quarter of a million underneath the water plant to the million gallons that's underneath there. So they're interconnected, so you can actually isolate one off, so if one fails, the only problem is, is if we have a failure in the million gallons, our, we're probably in complete violation, because we're not going to have the proper contact time for the water, meaning probably any of the water. Say, it does fail, say our freshwater storage is violated and we can't use it, and we have to separate it. We're required with the state of Michigan to have so much contact time with our water, meaning it has to be stored so much in a certain place for a certain amount of hours based on the flow, before us, we can ever use it. It's actually, what's required for cryptosporidium, because you have to have so many hours. If you don't have it, the water gets out, and we'd have to tell everybody to constantly boil water. That's not happening right now, but that's a possibility, and that's what, it's, it's good to have the quarter of a million, but it's bad in the sense that if we have to, if we lose the 1 million, we're in boil water situation for, for that duration.
Good. All right. Onward.
Next slide, sorry.
Next, we're going to go on to flooding. That first picture on the left-hand side is of Well Street by the new fish cleaning station and the entrance to the boat launch. Since probably mid to late summer, that area is connected by an open ditch to the river, and it's just stayed fairly flooded in that area. Every time we get a storm with- Every time we get a storm with west winds, it rises and it just constantly is up and down. There's a open catch basin as well in that area. And just anywhere along the streets where it's connected to the river and we have a catch basin, that water just goes right up with it, you know, it comes right up through it. The photos on the right are just more areas in that general vicinity of Dunkley and Wells. If you can go to the next slide. This is Dunkley. This is another area that we've had problems with since probably midsummer on. One of the things that we looked at was putting in a pump system, which we did. We blocked off two of the storm outlets so that the water can't come back through the system now, and then we put pumps in it so that it pumps it back out to the river. This has worked fairly effective. Anytime we have large storm events again and the river goes to a certain level, this area connects to the open channel that we, or open ditch that we've got in that area, and that water just runs through the street and it goes into this area and the pumps can't keep up. So, then, once those winds die down, the water goes down, the pumps catch up again, and it's, I think it's dried up that area, to at least where it's passable now. We've been keeping the barricades up, just to try to keep people out of the area, but it's been fairly effective. Now, if the water got much higher, we, this system wouldn't work anymore because once that open ditch area gets to a certain height, it would connect through the street at Dunkley and Wells, and the water would just keep flowing back in, the pumps couldn't keep up. Next slide. This next area is of Allen Avery Park. We had Edgewater take a look at this for us this summer. They came up with some recommendations of putting in a large pump system at the south end, raising some of the seawall along the river, and a few other items in there. This would be a fairly costly solution. On the next slide, once again, in this area, we showed trying to use the tiger dam. This is something that we could do more in the short term to, recently, DeBast had put up some sandbags in that area for a couple of the homeowners, and this would be a system that we could put in place and remove those sandbags. And it just primarily would stop that water. When the water's coming down the channel, it hits this area and it dissipates and it just, and then it rolls over the existing seawall down at Pierce Cove and at the park area. So, this is something that we're thinking of, we could put in place. I'm not sure if during the summer, if it would be more in the fall, if that's an option. Next slide. These are just some different options for holding the water back with sandbag type systems and different, looks like water-filled type of sandbag or water-filled bags. This would be similar, I guess in that lower middle one, it's probably similar to the tiger system that we're talking about implementing. Next slide. I guess it's questions.
If we had the wave reduction along the jetties, would that probably eliminate that?
Yeah, I think Mike maybe answered that. This all ties together with that.
Yeah, I think you'll see a reduction of the overtopping of all the seawalls in the lower part of the Black River, but that's not to say that if we rise in water levels this year, that you're not still going to have those problems even without the waves.
What about a, and I don't know, but what about a temporarily, temporary wave break put in? I've seen systems that, and actually I just sent city manager, but they're pretty much triangles on inlets that actually have holes through them to slow down the waves at least. Would something temporarily help us?
I think you'd have a hard time with that type of an approach in the water, in the channel. There may be some temporary, you know, if you picture a traffic barrier type implementation in areas where you've got a really bad overtopping, causing issues, but that's probably the best you're going to do on a temporary level.
Okay. One more question. Got Joe down there.
About a year and a half ago, Sixty Minutes ran one of their exposes on one of the Scandinavian countries that's completely surrounded by water, and they said that they've long given up on trying to keep the water out of the city. Rather, they've found through their engineer, engineers, how to redirect the water that comes into the city back out of the city, and they showed pictures of buildings and streets that used to be flooded many years ago that are dry as a bone now. And again, water's coming up, we have global warming, but they've been able to handle the whole thing through the whole city, the whole country by not stopping the water, by directing it back out. And they said they would love to come to the states and show some of our cities who are struggling how to do it. And now, this seems far-fetched, but is it possible that we could get someone to find out who the experts there are and maybe have an engineer show our city how to do this at a fraction of the cost and make it permanent? Because all these, so anything we come up with, it feels like we're putting, you know, the finger in the dyke and the dyke's going to break again. Is that even a possibility? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I've not seen that, but I'll definitely look it up.
It's within the last year and a half, and it's one of the Scandinavian countries. And it was amazing, and they said they would love to come to the states and show us how to do it.
I think it'd be really interesting to look up. The one challenge we're probably going to have is we've got a lot of infrastructure and a lot of buildings and roadways that are very close in elevation to that hundred-year high, and so there's not a lot of free board there that we have left to play with, but it'd be really interesting to look that up. Thanks for mentioning it.
Just to follow up on Mr. Reeser's comment, I did watch that episode.
He did?
It was fascinating. They talked about a long-term commitment to better control of the flood zones, and part of that solution was essentially taking a look at buildings, both residential, commercial, industrial, and relocating those out of the flood zones. That's one of the major issues we're facing here is we are so built up with properties nearby the flood zones. I'm hoping that our work with Leah, with the planning commission, that we can begin developing some good recommendations on how, as we look to the next fifty years, hundred years, we can put some controls in place to better manage the growth in those areas that currently don't have properties in the flood zones, trying to put some teeth into our ordinances to keep properties out of those flood zones. Now, with your initial question, can we try and pull up that information? Yeah, I'll work with our team to share what was done in the Netherlands, and they actually, their team was brought to the U.S., and they worked in areas that were impacted by Hurricane Sandy. I'll find that design team and forward it to our folks.
All right, next is the, our bridge. One of the issues, or the main issue we have right now with it is the motors for, that operate the hydraulics to the motor are getting very close to going under, I want to say, one of the storms we had in November when the water backed up in the river, it was up to the bottom of the cabinets. It didn't do any damage or anything like that, but it was getting to a dangerous point on there. I think if you go to the next slide, on that one on the left, right underneath, you see those large cabinets? They're about a foot, foot and a half above the water in that picture. One of the things we're looking at is raising those cabinets, those motors, a foot to two foot to gain some extra clearance there when the river gets backed up and the water rises. If we were to get to a point where those motors were to go underwater, you know, we'd end up with a situation where we'd have to decide, are we going to leave it open or closed at that point? One of the main things we have is the barge is down the river, and if we needed to get that barge to utilize it to do maintenance or different work on the river, on the lake, we'd need that bridge open for them to get through. Next. And then at the end here, we've got a cost summary of all these different items. They're not necessarily in any order of how we would prioritize them. I think Bill had touched on, we would look at the wastewater treatment plant, the bridge, the water treatment plant, it's kind of being our top items, and then we'd have to categorize
Any questions on what we went over, like the bridge, or, bridge is a big one, it's kind of like-
That bridge is kind of quick, yeah.
One way or the other.
And that you're considering, we're considering sooner rather than later, obviously, with the rising water. Okay. Any other questions of this group at this juncture?
Okay, Mr.
Anybody public questions, comments before we cruise on? It's a quiet group, all right?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, all of tonight's information is placed on the city's website. You can find it in the agenda packet. We will also place it right up onto the front page of the city's website for anyone who's got questions or want to review the materials. What I was hoping to do now is take a couple of minutes to move some seats around. You've just gone through a lengthy presentation on just how much this potentially could cost. Now, we're going to have a conversation on the other side of the issue, which is what potential funding sources could be made available, and I would say a big emphasis on potential. So, for this portion of the presentation, we'll have Mr. Bob Kirk, Mr. Dick Godfrey, they're both representing Bamburra County. Mr. Godfrey is the chair of the Board of Commissioners. Board of Commissioners recently took action requesting the state of Michigan consider a disaster declaration. Mr. Kirk is on behalf of Emergency Management. He's going to talk you all through the various programs for the state. Additionally, we have Mr. Mike Ryan from Congressman Upton's office and Mr. John Proz also representing the city. These two guys are going to talk to you about the potential funding sources, both at the state level as well as potentially at the federal level. If you give us just a couple of minutes, we'll move some chairs around and begin the next wave.
Do we want to just take a break till eight-thirty? Yes, so does.
Get a-
Motion to take a recess.
All right. Motion to recess. All right, let's resume at eight-thirty. Sound good? Take a break.
Right. [music][1384.01]
The chain, right? So you as locals do what you can to aggregate the data. Emergency management at the county aggregates that data, sends it to the governor. The governor aggregates that data, sends it to the federal government and begins to utilize its resources should there be a disaster or an emergent sort of disaster underway. Really makes a lot of sense on how that would continue to kind of work its way through the process. Finally, what's happening right now, I know that both Representative Griffin and Senator Nesbit are fully engaged and have been in communications not only with your folks here, but you can imagine that all of the representatives and senators that represent affected areas all around the Great Lakes, and as your Assistant City Manager Katie Hosier knows, we had presentations last week in committee from both sides of our peninsula state identifying the challenges that are happening, the risk that is happening. And I should point out what is going to be difficult to quantify, but I think is really critical too, is that this will have an economic impact too if we see a loss in tourist economics, if we see a loss in the number of people who come to visit our beaches and our shoreline. You can imagine that New Buffalo and St. Joseph and Sagatuck are all asking the same questions. So is there an emergent issue? Yes. Have we reached the level of those particular factors that are already prescribed? I don't know that we can answer that question yet. So what's Michigan up to? Michigan House of Representatives has moved swiftly to work with Eagle, the new department, as it's now called, that has jurisdiction over revetments and so forth when working with, as Mike Ryan will talk about in a few moments, the Army, US Army Corps of Engineers. The two bills that you see right here, Representative Lilly and Senator Victory, are the two bills that are, in essence, codifying what the department is now doing, which is allowing local municipalities and local homeowners, if there is an imminent threat of a loss of property, to engage in active measures into the lakefront or into the riverfront to try to mitigate the damage that is happening immediately. Instead of having to go through the long permitting process, which is pretty typical under normal water level situations, they would have the ability to alert the department that in the next 24 hours, they intend to take action. They will need to verify that it is in fact a licensed contractor, they would need to verify the sorts of things that the department still maintains are important. You can't just go do anything. Let them know what the intent is within that period of time. And then, once they've done so, they would need to go through the standard permitting process after they've mitigated the risk, or at least put barriers in place to try to eliminate the risk. The department has already put that into place regulatory-wise, right? So municipalities are already doing this. I know the city of St. Joseph in particular is working with homeowners and taking immediate action, but then subsequently acting to apply for the proper permitting and allowing that process to go through its phases. The department is allowing that. Senator Victory's bill is the one that has moved most quickly. As you can see here, it allows for the commencement of action. You need to be able to file upon completion of that action. You still are responsible for what it is that you put into the lakefront and so forth. But you have then responsibilities such as removal if in fact it is not approved within 90 days. Now, that would assume that, which is why you see the 78-week action, that would, in essence, still allows the department to keep control of its shoreline as it has a responsibility to do. So that passed last week, codifying what the department is currently doing as practice, which is unusual because of the emergency situation. Passed 22 to 16, you can imagine our shoreline folks are very interested in maintaining and keeping these things moving. So that is good progress, I think, to at least put it into statute. And for those that might be interested, the bill is online and gives a great deal of information on how they're going to quantify that. In essence, what they've, what the bill calls for is if it is provided that the lakes have reached a certain level above an actual per foot level for each of the Great Lakes, then it would allow for this emergency situation to take place. So that gives a little bit of the background on what has happened, at least at the state level, and what the state process is, and really the challenging process that it's going to be going forward, given the criteria to be an emergency situation or disaster declaration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having me. Appreciate it. I'm Mike Ryan with Congressman Fred Upton's office. And just to let you know, we've been up and down the coast from New Buffalo to Holland here in the last year or two, dealing with this situation. It's a very tough situation. Obviously, the federal government is the last place that you go to, and we're going to hear from our emergency manager here as well, and John put it in perspective as well, as far as the state goes. A lot of things have to happen for the federal government to get involved. One of the things that the Army Corps, though, does do right now is, if you can see, if you can go to the next slide, this is the area that you guys are in. You're in the, have you looked at everything so far? Have you looked at these things? And you've looked at all of them so far. So you've looked at the preparedness, the planning, the response, recovery, if there is any, at this point, and then obviously the mitigation is the big one. Let me just read you real quickly here what the Army Corps, how they look at this. "Under technical support, the US Army Corps of Engineers Emergency Management Office can deploy subject matter experts to the affected area to provide guidance on flood fight techniques, inspecting existing flood protection projects, and recommend corrective measures. Under direct assistance, materials can be provided to include sandbags, plastic sheeting to the supplemental local and state supplies, should they become exhausted in order to protect critical public facilities. Assistance in supplemental to local and state efforts, and normally at the request of the state's governor." Now, remember what has to happen. What has to happen is, first of all, the county has to declare an emergency, then the state has to declare an emergency, and then it finally gets to the federal government. We're not there yet, obviously. And so, as of right now, the federal government is not involved. If we would be involved, if we could be involved, we would be. But right now, that's the process that it has to go through. And I think a lot of people don't understand that. I know many of you do, but a lot of people don't understand, they want to go right to the federal government. Well, it's got to go through the process, and that takes time, and that's what we're trying to work on right here. And one more issue here, and then I'll turn it over to our county folks. It's called advanced measures. Public Law 8499 Flood Control and Coastal Emergencies allows for advanced measures. This is a type of assistance provided by the Corps to protect against loss of life and significant damages to urban areas and/or public facilities due to imminent threat of unusual flooding. It is in the support of state and local planned and ongoing efforts, and all activities are coordinated with the State Emergency Management Agency. Nonfederal interests must commit available resources, and a written request from the governor is required for the Corps' assistance. There is currently no provision for utilizing the advanced measures authority for erosion protection." That's kind of the bottom line right there. So it does have to go through the process, and it has to meet the emergency standards at all levels before the federal government can get involved. So with that, I'll turn it over to our county folks.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
Well, I'm confused about this because last summer, we had a speaker, the beginning of the summer, who, his name was Peter Anan, A-N-N-I-N. And he was not a government official, but an expert on the Great Lakes. And he spoke about an organization, and I think it's a governmental organization, that controls all the Great Lakes, and it must be five or six states. And George, you were there, and I can't remember the details. I've called this man three times in the last four days, can't reach him. But he said, nothing can be done about the management of the water level in the Great Lakes, as I remember it, without these, all these states agreeing on it. And there's laws governing the Great Lakes. And these laws say you can put in extra water or take out extra water. And he went to the great detail of talking about three towns in Wisconsin and Chicago that can take a certain amount of water out for drinking water. Does that have anything to do with Fred Upton and the government, or is this, what is this organization that controls the Great Lakes?
Well, I'm not fully aware of the organization that controls that part. I know there's a Great Lakes group that has, yeah, commission that has, they all work together, the states that are part of the Great Lakes work together on that. I'm not aware of all the things this guy's talking about as far as taking water out and putting water in. I'm not aware of that. I mean, I don't know what he exactly talked about.
It was the Great Lakes Compact that was created to basically prevent people from pulling excess water out, and you know, is that, was that situation?
Yeah, they don't want other folks stealing our water, basically.
Right. It's the, can you ship it to California question?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
That's the Great Lakes Commission, Mr. Mayor.
Which would then, the reason I bring it up, it begs the question, if we have so much excess water right now, first, is someone putting water in that we don't know about, like Canada, which I keep hearing? But the second big question is, why can't we allow certain cities like Chicago to take excess water out for the next year or two to stop some of this for drinking water, which seems to make sense? Then I've been handed from our Economic Development Manager tonight, I think called the Great Lakes Coalition, which their sole purpose is to help manage the lakes. But I don't think this is a governmental group. I think it's just people that get together and want to try to help the Great Lakes. It just seems to be, in my opinion, and it's only my opinion, I don't know facts, but why can't we get some of these groups together and do something to get the lake level temporarily down so we stop the erosion, so we're not spending millions of dollars and continue to have the water come up? Isn't there anything that we can do?
You know, I'm not an engineer. I know some of these engineers could probably answer that. I don't know that it's that simple, quite frankly. There is a Great Lakes Coalition that helps keep the Great Lakes clean and fights, you know, Asian carp and all that type of thing, but I don't know that it's that simple, quite frankly. If it was that simple, then we could probably do something about that. But I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting it's simple. I'm just suggesting, whatever governing boards there are for the Great Lakes, why wouldn't Upton and our governor be talking to them? And if they are, shouldn't we be part of that as a city? And shouldn't the people on this, on the coastal lines know about this and have some input on it?
Go ahead, John. I will tell you, Mr. Mayor and Council, our former governor was appointed by the current governor to be one of our representatives at the Great Lakes Commission. Eight states, two provinces, all that touch the Great Lakes. That is the single safest way to protect the Great Lakes, is to work in concert with each and every one of the states that surround the Great Lakes and the two provinces on issues that I think are very, very significant and important to the Great Lakes as a whole. If this is a topic that Governor Whitmer would like Governor Snyder to, former Governor Snyder to address, I'm certain that they will be in communications about that. Yeah, I, you know, it's easy to say it today, but it wasn't that long ago that there were hews and cries from the rooftops that we were going to be diverting our Great Lakes water to Nevada. That was a very serious conversation, not, but just a few years ago, with some of the drought issues in the southeast, excuse me, southwest. And while in the legislature, I proudly supported the Great Lakes Compact for that very reason.
And that was part of the discussion that that group had with us was, you know, I think they said 1% is due to, you know, precipitation. And this is again back to what you were saying, because if you think it, when it was low and the harbors are, you know, you can only dredge so much when it goes so long. And I understand that's why, I wish it was simple, but it's not. Looking for the plug somewhere. I haven't found it, but...
If I could add one more, one more point. In the presentation last week from Eagle at the House of Representatives, Chairman Alar asked that the department give a detailed analysis as to what the purpose or the reason for all the water is. Why do we have these great water issues all across Michigan? And it was clear that it was the last five years of rainfall, plain and simple. Snowfall, rainfall, precipitation, and the maps themselves very clearly identified that we are at historic levels of precipitation in the last five years, and that's exactly why we have the kind of water table that we have today and the high lake water levels that we have. There probably isn't an easy answer to that in any quick sort of fashion.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I think we're to the county. Gentlemen?
And just to add just a little bit, not only are you guys experiencing along the coastline, there's high water tables throughout Bamburen County. We've got high water levels and numerous lakes. So it is also an inland issue too, that we also got to think about and remember. I know there's issues, if you go along I-94, you can see a section of roadway just into Kalamazoo County on the south side there that's been closed all summer, just to high water levels. So I appreciate Mike. Mike kind of stole a lot of my steam on the declaration process, but he is correct. It starts locally, and generally it ends locally, when it comes down to it. For emergency managers, we have to act under Public Act 390, which basically the statute states of circumstances within a county or municipality indicate that occurrence or a threat of widespread or severe damage, injury or loss of life or property from a natural or human-made cause exists. So any type of consideration for that should be a local declaration. As they've stated, we just are not at that point. This unfortunately just does not have that start date and end date. We have to look at what are resources. We have not gone through our resources. When we start looking at declaring, a lot of what the state's going to ask us is, number one, have we been operating off of emergency operations plan? Number two, have we depleted our resources? And those are the main areas they look at. At this point, we're not there. We've been working with the city. We keep track of what's going on. We've been working with the townships. I was just talking to Chief Wise tonight, and he's going to provide me some more information that we're keeping on what they call the MySim's computer system, which is through the state, where we document what's going on and what we're finding, so that way it keeps the governor appraised to what's going on. We've held conversations up and down the shoreline with our emergency managers, discussing what issues we're facing and what they're facing, and trying to find a way. But unfortunately, we still have to act under that Public Act 390. I'd like to say there was easy answers. I think all of us would like to see some easy answers, but we know this is, we're really going to have to work at some short term and long term. Sitting here tonight, I was quite pleased with some of the discussions that was taking place and some of the mitigation efforts that are going forward. As far as financial, one of the recommendations that I've been talking with Brian about is looking at our hazardous mitigation grants, checking into that, seeing if there's any funding that we can come through that, maybe not for many of the major projects, but maybe for some of the smaller projects. But that's going to take some research to see if that will happen. I guess the biggest thing I've got is, what questions do you have for me?
Anybody have anything specific? I think...
I just think we're trying to be proactive and try and see what resources there are out there before an event happens to where we have to get Mr. Upton's office involved. And I think that was my, my understanding, is trying to gather all the information we can, see if there's any funding available to preventative before we dump a million gallons of waste.
Right, right. And that's where I would look into that hazardous mitigation grant, as far as my end of it. Unfortunately, I don't deal with a lot of the funding parts of it. I deal strictly emergency management, and a lot of my roles are either the hazardous mitigation and some remedial stuff, which we work through the hazardous mitigation plan and going through the hazardous mitigation grants, which I really think we need to take a look at. Unfortunately, the next timeframe for that is not going to be till September, so it doesn't solve any issues that we are going to experience coming through the spring and the summer. But in still looking at long term, there could be some solutions that we could look at and going through that. A lot of my role, unfortunately, when it comes to enacting Public Act 390 or declaring a local state of emergency, is after the event happens. Unfortunately, that's just the nature of the beast that I'm in. I can't really play much of a political role because of my position, but I think moving forward of what you guys have planned, the cost I know is going to be the major issue, but I'm very limited on what funding, really, there's none other than if something we do declare. And again, just keep in mind, it's still not budgetary. It has to do with resources. And if anything is filed financially and anything comes forward, the funding, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, is just basically to get you guys at a point where you can now handle and manage that disaster on your own, and it gets turned back over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think part of the point, just for the public that's watching, is just to have an awareness that, one, we're aware of it. We have hired a lot of very intelligent people that are keeping an eye on it, that are studying it. So we're here to say, we're aware of it. We have very good lines of communication federally, locally. Our staff is outstanding. Our first responders are aware of it. So we all have an eye on it, and we will continue to keep an eye on it to make sure it does not become a bigger problem, or at least as best we can to keep an eye on it, given the fact that Mother Nature will do what she's going to do.
And you know, I would say too, keep vigilant, because just because it's not happening now, who knows what's going to happen down the road? We tell that to all the folks, you know, New Buffalo started, I think they had theirs first, they had an organization. Sagatuck's getting theirs, Holland's getting theirs. Stay together, work together, because who knows what's going to happen? Things may change down the road, as far as funding goes. You just don't know what's going to happen, but keep pounding away at the rock, basically.
We will do it. Sounds good. Anything else? Any questions? Anybody of council or the public?
So, members of council, the goal tonight was truly to try and treat this as a workshop discussion. We are not asking for any formal action from council, other than to educate yourselves and to be aware. As we look into the upcoming months, you're going to be asked in March to go into priority setting, followed by late March, early April, to move into budgeting. And we are really trying to do a good job of laying the groundwork for what we are seeing as your staff as we look to 2020, which is, the potential for higher water is very real. Further, the potential for funding sources is just that. It's a potential. It is in no way a guaranteed. And one of the key points tonight is, if funding sources are made available, it's going to be through grants and potentially reimbursements that will flow later. What that means for the council is, if we have immediate damage, it will come from the budget. That is just the thing that I just can't make clear enough, that as we look to 2020, we are going to do everything possible to build healthy fund balances to be made available in the event of disaster, and then we can just hope for recovery either from the state or from the Fed. It's not great news, but our goal tonight was just to try and make clear to the public that we are absolutely aware that the South Beach is getting smaller and smaller, and that there is not a simple solution to run down and pump a bunch of sand onto it. We have those quotes. We've been talking with local contractors, but throwing that kind of money onto the beach when you know that you're facing affluent issues at the wastewater, the potential for a failure at the Baskel Bridge, and on and on, it's one of these where I've been just saying, you don't build a garage when the house is on fire. With that said, Mr. Mayor, we still have a couple of other items on the agenda.
Yep. Let's roll on.
Okay.
Any questions, anyone else, before we roll to item number 11?
Thank you for the presentations. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Excellent work from everybody. Thank you for being here. Item 10 is we're going to be asked to consider approval of a high water policy for the municipal marinas for the 2020 season. I see Ms. Kate is en route. Again, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of the high water policy.
Second. All right. A motion and a second to adopt the high water policy. Kate Hosier is here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir. So what we have here is a high water policy that the Harbor Commission and myself have come up with. We had a workshop in the early part of January and then ratified, or the Harbor Commission reviewed this policy at their January 21st meeting and have forwarded it on to the City Council for review and adoption. What the high water policy just means is that we are anticipating that the docks at the municipal marinas, all of them, will be underwater as the season approaches. And because of that, we wanted to kind of get some plans in place as to what we would be doing if that does indeed happen. So the policy kind of comes up with, we're going to be continually monitoring the situation about a month-by-month basis as we get forward to the opening date of April 15th. If on April 15th, we believe that the water levels are high, too high to open, we're going to delay openings for at least a month, and then reevaluate as we go forward. We're trying to give our boaters as much notice, because it takes time for them to get on a list, to get the boat out of dry dock and into the water, and to make sure that it's all maintained. So we're trying to give them at least a heads up on what we're thinking that we're going to do. But we also acknowledge that if the marinas don't open, what are their, what are their options, because many of them have already paid their seasonal fees? So in the high water, so in the policy, we're saying two things. One, if this is too uncertain, if they don't want to wait month to month to find out what's going to happen, they can ask for a refund, and we can give them a refund, no questions asked. Now, if they want to keep their deposit with us for the next year, so they'll take their 2020 deposit, we're going to just put that into 2021 basket, they'll get their dock back. If they want to have a complete reimbursement of their entire funds, we will do that, but then we'll give their dock to the next person on the waiting list. But we're trying to just kind of let them know that we understand that this is going to be a game changer for this year, and just kind of try to get a policy for our boaters and staff and finance and all that. And we have worked on notifications, so if the marinas are actually closed, we have a plan in place to notify as many people who are walking by, as well as any boaters who would come up to the docks, that the docks are closed. So if I'm missing anything, Councilmember Schlock is a member of the Harbor Commission. He might be able to supplement what I'm missing.
I would just add too, that the reason for looking at it before on a month-to-month basis is basically for a marina manager and the staff that he has to try and plan on and hire. You know, he can't hire staff and then tell them to turn away and sorry for the summer, but you know, he's got enough challenges to deal with, with the marina and everything else. But we need to notify him as far in advance as possible, so that he can get proper staff hired for the season, if we're going to have a season. And that, obviously, the safety is the number one goal, and it's the number one point. And we've had everybody from finance people at our Harbor Commission meetings to giving us options on returning and how that process would work. We've had Mr. Hunter from the Public Works Department preparing for the emergency situation. We've talked about the role a mayor plays in emergency, and right down to the police chief for closing a park. So we've had all those discussions, and mainly, we just want to try and give his people as much notice as possible. Thank you.
And ultimately, safety is the name of the game. There's two issues that come up if the water goes, is sustained over the docks. Two, you want to make sure that all of your electric is off, so you don't have any stray currents or electric shock drowning. But two, those docks are very slippery. I mean, it really doesn't take much to have a slip and fall accident out there. It doesn't take long for that to build up when the water is sustained over the decks. So those are the issues that we kind of brought up, and that's why we're asking for this, for this approval of this high water policy.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Are there any public questions before we go to council questions? Everyone kind of, just come on up.
Yeah, just through 24 and 1/2 Grand Boulevard. It's really, this is serious stuff tonight, right? But I just was curious, on the financials you talked about, if somebody, a boater chose to, they could, you would say you're closed on April 15th, maybe May 15th. They can make a choice at any time along there, along this consideration.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And the other thing, Kate, is you make individual decisions on each of the marinas, Black River Maritime, and one may be open and the other's closed?
That's correct. We do know that several of the marinas are at different levels. The Museum Marina, which I know that you're at, is actually at, is the highest six docks that we do have, so that would be...
I was ready to go on today.
You were, actually, you were.
That's my question.
Thank you. Anybody else question? Just anybody else? Council? Any questions? I think we know, we got in front of us, so need to get it in place. So seeing other questions, we've got a motion and a second to approve the high water policies for the municipal marinas for 2020. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is in place. Next, we're at citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. Anybody left want to talk about something more enlightening or happy? Nothing? All right. City manager comments?
So, just to rehash, this was a lot to take in. Council, our desire tonight was not to overwhelm anyone, it was just to paint the fullest picture. Staff has received some negative feedback from members of the public, just asking why we're not responding to certain areas. We are keenly aware of that. Our number one priority is critical infrastructure, followed up by that is ensuring that homeowners are being protected to the very best.
ensuring that homeowners, um, are being protected to the very best ability. So with that said, uh, as we move into the budget cycle, staff is going to be laying out a variety of options as we look to the 2020 season. Something that we just tried to show you tonight is, critical infrastructure is going to be the, the absolute top priority, and as you look through the various expenses, our ability to deliver everything on that $17 million list, it's just not there. We're three and a half square miles on a typical year, when you pull in everything from marinas to police, to parks, to water, sewer, electric, and on, it's about a $40 million total budget. So, this presentation is give or take half your total budget. We have some good ideas as we move into the budget cycle, but as I've been working with the various departments, the first comment we're making from finance is, hey, don't have your head in the sand, you've got to be aware of the situation, look through this report, know the numbers, and then bring your, your budget presentations. That is the philosophy that we're taking at the staff level, that's the philosophy that as we begin, uh, to present draft budgets to the council, that's, that's the logic we're embracing. Um, with that said, we are happy to hear from the public. If we're missing something, uh, between myself, Kate, and Bill, we're taking phone calls and emails daily. Should the council wish to let us know of anything going on, please feel free to contact us. The nice thing about tonight is, the, the media is paying attention, our elected leaders are also paying attention. Um, in the last couple of weeks, we've received calls from both state officials as well as federal officials. Congressman Upton's office has been making regular trips up and down the lakeshore. Uh, we have a couple of senators coming in the coming weeks to do similar things. This is all positive. We hope that by really making the case known, that we put South Haven in a good position if pots of money open up at the state or federal level. Now with all of that said, um, shifting to this past weekend, uh, city had the, hosted the annual Icebreaker Fest. Uh, Chief Thompson's in the back, uh, she and her team actively worked, um, all day Saturday into Sunday, from setting up barricades to doing foot patrols, uh, to just being present throughout the, the downtown, and just a big kudos to, to the chief, uh, for her people, for her efforts. I know she personally logged a whole lot of miles, uh, walking throughout the downtown, just looking for problems and working, uh, to, to prevent them. And then also, just a big kudos to her for bringing forward just awesome stories. And tonight, you got to compliment Officer Keen for saving somebody's life, and, um, I've said repeatedly to department heads, they've all got a really great story to tell, and so, well done to Chief Thompson and for bringing that story forward, and just complete hats off to the officers and to the volunteer who, who saved a person from drowning in a pond. That's unreal. Those are my comments, sir.
Thanks, sir. How about if we start on our left tonight?
No comment.
No comment.
No comment. Going fast.
Um, I thought Icebreakers was great, uh, well organized, um, some little hiccups maybe, but other than that, uh, it was a lot of fun, good chili, so.
Uh, I just feel like the, the lakefront, the river is, uh, is like at the heart of South Haven, so I appreciate all the effort in looking ahead and trying to get on top of the issues that we have, that we're going to be faced with, and so I appreciate all the presentations and all the hard work that went into the meeting tonight.
Um, ending on a positive note, as Chris said, Icebreakers seemed to be a success. I thought it was a great idea, closing the streets, where people could walk up and down Phoenix and people had fun. I was checking driver's license for, uh, for liquor at one location, and I saw people from Illinois, Indiana, and one woman from Germany. So we had people all over coming to the city, which is great. I went into a couple of stores, including Decadent Dog with my dog, and you could hardly walk in there, it was so filled with people, and that was great. Um, I'm looking forward to the downtown being built. All the visitors came, saw that buildings are being knocked down, the streets are being worked on, so hopefully they're looking at like we are, that it's going to be a positive thing in months to come. And I'm grateful to staff for having this evening tonight with the education, because the more we know, um, up here, the better we can react. It is really frustrating to me, I'm a businessman, I just want to get things fixed, and fix quickly, and there is no quick fix to this, unfortunately. Thanks.
Very good, thank you. I just want to thank, one, everybody for coming, for staying for two hours and 15 minutes and listening tonight, which is wonderful, the more we understand, the better. Um, again, thanks for our speakers, always very good to have Adam Marsh and all of our other guests join us tonight. Officers Keen and Melendez, as well as, uh, Mr. Grisbowski. Again, our hats off to all of you, thank you, and our, we have both chiefs here, uh, Chief Thompson and Chief Wise, thanks to you and all of our first responders every single day for keeping us all safe in this community. Um, and again, I just ditto the chamber, visitors bureau, volunteers, city staff, great Icebreakers weekend, nice to have everybody here in town. And it is still February, just, it was 50 and sunny today, so it is winter. So if you're interested, this Wednesday, the high school has a ski team, 5 o'clock, bittersweet, there is a ski race, in case you'd like to go. 30 minutes away, just telling you. My kids make up half the team, so you should go. All right, on that note, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thanks all.